Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We've got one item on the agenda tonight, so it shouldn't be too long of a meeting. And that is R.F.A.C.F., if I got all the initials correct, which is Fowler Farm application. The secret memo from H2M is in the file. I assume everybody's had a chance to read. I know everyone's had a chance to read it on the board. I assume the public has had it for almost a week. I'm not going to close the hearing tonight, so we'll be open for continued discussion on this. But I do want to continue to push this application along. Now that everyone on the board has had an opportunity to read this, I'd like to know if there are any board members that have any questions or comments with respect to the H2O memo, H2M memo, sorry, the H2M memo, or any questions, comments? And have you had a chance to think about Mr. Bennett's response that we received? So I'll start down here at this end.
Well, I think I still have some questions about the village access to Phillips Pond for testing purposes. And I think that was addressed in the H2M memo, and it still seems open. We don't have, we don't know what the access is going to be or what the easement is going to be. And I think we really need that information.
Great.
And Lisa's not here, so...
Right, but I think it's up to the applicant to provide us with a site plan that shows that easement access to the pond.
Well, I think that's part of granting a negative declaration.
Is contingent upon receiving that.
By site plan, you mean it should be depicted on the map?
Correct.
The subdivision map?
Correct.
Okay.
Amanda, anything?
Well, I agree. I think Lisa should be here to answer some of our questions. I think that both the memo and the response were well reasoned, and they contained a lot of very valuable information as far as they went. But I do think the two outstanding things are the ag easement and the covenants and restrictions, and all that will be included in that, which is a major question, and pond access for cleanup. So if we can get those matters addressed soon, we can move it along faster. And I felt that Lisa did make some very significant points in terms of questions that remain, and she's no longer here to address them, or she's no longer, she's not here today. So in light of that, I think we've got a lot of good information, but we do need a little bit more.
Yeah, understood. No intention to put this to a vote tonight. It's just, you know...
I think it's very mature.
Yeah, we'd like to, you know, like everyone to hear comments and recent thinking now that you've had a chance to read the memo and digest it. Alan, anything to say?
I don't, it confirms what we've been hearing over and over and over again. And it's, attorney Bennett is not here to repeat himself. He's given all the arguments, and he's given, I'm happy to hear him, I think. Except on behalf of the applicant, I'm happy to hear him anytime. So he's not here.
I will say I appreciate it.
I've told him that, too, by the way. That's not a secret.
I appreciated the applicant's thorough, you know, retelling of the history with the information. I thought that was very valuable, very helpful as far as that went. So thank you for that.
Bill?
Thanks. I thought the H2M memo was well reasoned. I thought the letter from the counsel for the applicant had good information in it. It was helpful to us and responsive to some of the questions that were raised. I continue, also have the same point. There are some important issues that haven't been resolved that affect, that should affect our determination. One is the access to the pond, which Mr. Bennett refers to, but doesn't, hasn't yet to come to a resolution on, and which I think we need to get a resolution on. I think the agricultural reserve probably needs some further fleshing out, and I think equally, I think the vegetation barrier around the Phillips Pond need, probably needs, also needs some further discussion.
Great. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open it up for any public comment and response on, now that these memos are in. I'm not going to, you know, we'll leave that open until our next meeting, which I think is September...
Fifteen.
Fifteen, September.
Middle of September.
Yeah, middle of September, which will also give the applicant to respond or add to the file some of the things that the board members have requested.
It's real simple.
Any comment over here?
Agricultural Reserve is over half. I think it's a 212.
We did receive H2M's memo, and we responded in kind. We had put in one of our prior letters that we will provide either access on this property or on an adjacent property prior to final approval. That had been our position, that we were going to try and search and see where the most appropriate location was for that pond access point for the limited purpose of environmental testing and cleanup for Phillips Pond, not public access.
Correct.
I think environmental testing, but plus also remediation if necessary.
Correct, but not for general public access.
Right, not public access. It's just for village or...
Trustees.
Yeah, F and C trustees.
F and C, F and C.
Yep.
But we had represented that we would try and find that location prior to final approval of the subdivision, with the understanding that the applicant's representing it will be found.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Sure.
So if the board wants to see that access on the map, that change should be made at this stage, because you're really not supposed to make substantial map changes in final?
Correct, yeah.
Was the board looking to see the draft language for that as well, like a text of an easement?
We'll get to that. Yeah, I just, yeah, right.
Okay. With respect to the language, you were, I just wanted to make sure I was clear. You were looking for a language for the agricultural reserve area?
Before we get specific, let me interrupt. Before we get specific on that, I think we've heard comments. I want to hear other public comments, and then I think we will have a list for you of what the board is going to need to move the secret application or secret determination forward.
All right. I don't really have any other comments. I'll take a second comment.
Okay. Mr. Bragman?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm Jeff Bragman. I represent the owner of 91 Fowler Lane. I'm basically reserving my comments for the next meeting. I just wanted to say I appreciate the fact that you're adjourning today, since the memo, by what we could find from village records, did not come in a week in advance. So I'm thankful for that, and it, we were unable to get our consultants here on such short notice, so the adjournment's welcome. I just wanted to say something general that reminds me of the time that I was on the town board in the town of East Hampton, and we'd get a complicated application in front of us. And, I don't know, there may have been consultants on one side and consultants on the other side, but whenever the spotlight came on the board members to say, like, "What do you think of this?", it was somewhat difficult before the full debate had occurred. And what we're, my hope is that on the next hearing date, that we'll be able to give you some further information on issues that we don't think were adequately examined in the H2M memo. And there are some important issues on this property that involve, first of all, the health of the pond and what's going to keep it healthy. The drainage on-site is an important issue. And there are, whether or not the soils have any contaminants that have persisted from the days of farming. So, I also enjoyed the explanation of the Fowler's history of farming through the generations, but frankly, the narrative, while it was a good example of local history, did not do very much to tell us about the actual methods, whether there are any herbicides, pesticides, fungicides that were used over the years. And that, that's the kind of specific information that I think will help you. And I hope that as we move forward and give you a little more definitive information, that you look at us not solely as people in opposition to the application, but people who want to see the planning board fully examine these issues that exist on this property that are somewhat different than the other subdivisions that the applicant's attorney has cited you to. Here, you've got real serious flood issues, and we'll have some more data on that, and you have very serious issues of water flowing into the pond and a history of harmful algae blooms that is a significant problem in the village. So our hope is that in the next time around, we're going to, I hope, help the board, give you some more information, so that you don't have to just pick out general conclusions about what you're thinking without having a better basis in the facts. And that's what I look forward to the next time. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, or Board Members, Counsel. Tiffany Frigenti, co-counsel with Mr. Bragman, representing 91 Fowler LLC. I also am going to reserve for the next meeting, and I appreciate the board's courtesies in extending this and keeping things open for purposes of SECRE. I did just want to point out, and I did reference this in my letter, my recent letter, but the H2M memo, when it cites the letters that it had considered as part of this memo, it did leave out my July 31 letter, which was acknowledged but not uploaded to the Dropbox, I assume in error, and also another correspondence, I believe it was July 29, of the applicant. And I would just inquire as to whether or not H2M is going to supplement its memo and consider the information that was set forth in those correspondents, because I think it's some very important and valuable information, both to the board and H2M to consider. I outline also the history of the property. I've located zoning board decisions that are significant, and I think the board should review. Go through the easement issue that's open with a demonstrative showing the issues that we see with respect to access, and a plethora of other issues which I think are of concern. And so I think if the board could direct H2M to, you know, supplement its memo, it would serve everyone's best interest to address those issues and consider all the information available. And the other question...
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Do you have a copy of the 1990 zoning board determination? Because I didn't see that attached to your letter.
Sure, yes, we do, and I can give that to you.
Thank you.
And the other question I'd pose is whether the board's going to require as part of, you know, this SECRE analysis, a Phase 1, as was recommended by the Suffolk County Planning Board, Department of Health, and also H2M at one point, or whether that's an open issue at this point?
Okay. Anything else, and I'll address that.
No, I think that's all for now.
Okay. Thank you. So I don't believe, and I don't want to speak for all the board members, but I don't believe that the board is going to require a Phase 1. I think, given the information that we have so far, and we agree that additional information has come in, it's not included in the H2M memo. If there's anything new in there, we'd like to include it, or have H2M incorporate it in that memo. But I think my conclusion is that when reading the history provided by the applicant, the thinking evolved along these lines. One, the property is being served by Suffolk County water, so there is no well-water contamination issue that you're worried about there, number one. Number two, the property has been farmed the way every other property around in the Southampton, South Fork has been farmed for, you know, the last 150 years. There was nothing out of the ordinary in the way it was farmed, what was farmed, farming practices. As a matter of fact, the applicant has county permits for the oil tanks and gasoline tanks, which are very difficult to obtain and are very stringent. So the fact that, the conclusion would be that they've managed that aspect of the property very well, that we're likely to require that no soil be removed from the property, and it's likely we're going to require that additional soil be brought in when it's developed so that it meets the floodplain requirements. So based on that thinking, it's, I believe it's unlikely the board's going to require Phase 1. Alice, was that correctly said? Would you add anything?
I know that no soil being removed is an enforceable condition. I don't know about bringing soil in. I think that would probably be left at the building permit level.
Okay.
But I, yeah, otherwise I'm in agreement.
But Alex, it's accurate to believe that soil's going to have to be brought in to meet the floodplain requirements, correct?
I expect that's likely. Houses built on this property would need to be elevated above the floodplain.
Thank you. Anyone on the board disagree with that thinking at this point?
Not at this point.
Yeah, okay. So not completely closed, but that's...
What you're thinking is at this point...
That's the direction, that's the direction we're headed.
Understood. And so, just so I make sure I'm on the same page, you're going to request that H2M supplement its memo, just to the extent there was any correspondence that was not considered in connection with this memo?
To the extent that there is new information or new facts to be considered, we would direct H2M to incorporate that in their memo, yes.
Okay. And when, when would the, I guess, amended or supplement?
That's a good question.
Because I just don't want to be in this situation where...
That's a good, that's a good question. Lisa's on vacation this week, correct? But I think it's...
I was supposed to be also, thank you guys.
Yeah, but it's, but it's only for a week, right? And our next meeting is not until the middle of September, so that's plenty of time. So, yeah, it'll be ready for the next meeting.
So, but before...
Mr. Bragman, I will try and make sure you have it a week before our next meeting. I'll do my best.
Just because, you know, we can work weekends, but getting experts to look at these things on 24-hour notice doesn't always, you know, go well. So, okay, so if you could, so then if the meeting's the 15th, it would be one week before, you know, 15. And I don't have a hard copy of that with me. I did last time, but if you give me your email, I can send it over.
You have my email.
Oh, okay. Oh, I do, I, right, sorry. Okay, thank you. I'll get that to you. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you.
David McMaster, on behalf of the owners of 560 Wickapog Road. So based on my initial review of the memorandum, I think it presents a lot of conclusions without much analysis, if any. That being said, I'm going to reserve my comment for a future date, and I look forward to speaking with you then. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. I think in terms of moving forward from the applicant's perspective, there are, is this the list of information that we need in order to make a secret determination? An easement to the pond to provide access, which we've discussed from the beginning. We've talked about it at the south end of the pond. I assume when you say offsite, that's what you're talking about, right? Or on the actual property under consideration? I think we're willing to consider those two at this point, because that's all we're aware of. If you're thinking of something else, you should flag that early on, okay? Because I think the north end of the pond, that window's closed. I don't think that would be acceptable access over that existing easement that's like a very small drainage easement. It's not going to work. I think we need to, because one of the items mentioned in the H2M memo was the impact on agricultural resources, right? I think we've got to begin to get into greater detail in the terms of the ag agreement, the ag reserve. And I'd like to direct Alice to start preparing the form of that ag reserve, and I'm going to pause right there, and, well, not yet, but I am going to come back to all the board members here and ask if there are certain items that are key points for them to see in that ag reserve draft that Alice is going to pull together for us. I think we need to, we were talking about the landscaping setback from the pond, and I think on the site plan, it would be helpful if you changed the way you describe that to Alex. What words would we like to see there?
You could call it a natural landscape buffer.
Yeah.
That's, I think, how it's been discussed and described in some of the board's...
Right, but that would be specific enough to...
I think probably you would also want to see some idea of what would happen there in terms of a landscape plan, possibly language, if that's going to be recorded as a covenant.
Right, okay. We talked about Phase 1 and the soil issues that were identified in the H2M memo. Assuming that when you submit that information, that it's satisfactory to the board at that point, I'd like to proceed with a vote. So it's very likely that we, if you can get that together by the next meeting and everyone has had a chance to review it, then I'd like to proceed with the secret determination at our next meeting. All right? You know, if, it's to the extent that you have something, right, you have until the next meeting, to flag it, right, and let us know, right? Yeah, go ahead. Can you step up to the...
I appreciate your urgency to come to a conclusion on this application, but I would, I would urge you to a little bit greater caution, because you really, no one tonight has referred to any of the documentation that we've submitted so far. We're going to bring in, as I've said, consultants and deal with some issues that this board has not touched. You haven't touched the issue of drainage. You haven't touched the issue of the pond. You haven't resolved the reserve area. So my, I react with a little bit of dismay at the suggestion that, you know, you know you're going to be ready to decide this thing at the next meeting. I would just ask you to keep an open mind and be prepared to listen to a full examination of what we think the evidence is, and probably it's best, at least, again, I hate to keep referring to my own experience when I was on that side of the dais, it's best to build in a little bit of decision-making and thinking time before you reach a decision. It's, to let the information settle in your mind, and so that you don't have to think of a decision process while the video cameras are rolling and you've just heard information on the same night. A little bit of caution is merited in a case this important. This is a very important piece of land, and one of the ones that the comprehensive plan envisioned as being preserved, and we think there's some serious issues. And I think slower decisions, not, I'm not talking about slowing the process down, but giving yourself some time off the record to think it through will make for a better decision.
Yeah, and I'm going to defend my fellow board members here, that we do think about this outside these meetings, right?
I know.
So we don't wait until the last minute to think about these things, but...
But you can't think about evidence you haven't heard.
Correct. So to the extent that you get us that evidence, sooner the better, right?
Well, the next...
But I'm just putting, I'm just putting everyone on notice that they should be prepared, right, to present all their evidence at the next meeting, because if it's out there, right, and it's appropriate at the time, and we got to make that, I'll make that call at that meeting.
Okay.
If it's appropriate, I don't want anyone to be surprised if we put this to, we won't put it to a vote then, but we will direct Alice to draft a resolution that we would then, right? Isn't that how we would do it, Alex?
No, I wouldn't draft it. Usually Lisa would draft it.
Okay, so Lisa would draft it, and then we would vote on it at the next...
At the following meeting, yeah, based on the discussion and the vote.
Exactly, so that's how this will unfold.
Yeah, well, it sounds a little like there's a little bit of speeding urgency toward that decision. I would prefer to think that you would take some time. It's taken us a long time, and we haven't had much time in front of this board. We've only spoken to you on one occasion, and that was without any real discussion of the facts that we've uncovered since then.
Yep, okay.
I see, I'm just a little, also usually in a, in a conversation about covenants and restrictions, language is drafted, discussed, redrafted, discussed. It usually is not an on-the-spot process in a document of this nature, so...
I would agree.
Can you, can you say that again? So I'm not sure I understood what you were...
She said she would agree.
No, what you said was...
I said that the drafting and adopting of covenants and restrictions is a very serious and lasting document, and it's, in my experience, you would never hear it and agree to it in one sitting. It really is the type of thing that is looked at and reviewed by council.
Yeah, this is a secret determination we're talking about.
But we're talking about drafting covenants and restrictions regarding the ag reserve.
But that would be further down, that's, that's...
I think we've misunderstood that, what you're, what you were saying.
Okay, we're not going to...
What are you...
So I think what the chair is saying is that some of the mitigation measures that are addressed as being offset in H2M's report would be required conditions of approval by the board, and the covenants are usually drafted after an approval, and you have to comply with those conditions. And often, those conditions include certain covenants that affect all the lots to put those future property owners on notice of requirements that they have to abide by.
I think we're saying the same thing.
The only other thing that we'd like updated from the applicant is the Wickapog side landscape plan, including, I think we'd like to see a different plan than that, okay? That also includes that west entrance design there, so that it addresses some of the safety concerns that have come up before. You know, we've talked about which entrances, open, closed. You can have all three, you can leave all three of the entrances open, I think, is the thinking here, but, but that one main entrance there to address some of the safety concerns as you pull, as tractor trailers pull out of there on that dangerous curve, just like to see that addressed specifically in that landscape plan. Anything else for board members? Any other questions, comments from board members? No.
Did you mention the conditions for the ag reserve?
No.
Anybody have any specific conditions they'd like to see in the ag reserve?
That was, that was a lengthy few months, so we need to, I would need to review it. I have notes on all of it. You do, I think, as well. There were drafts and drafts and redrafts, and so perhaps we can get that together and be ready to discuss or...
Well, I'm just trying to give Alice some direction here.
Oh, okay.
Right, so if there are things specific that you'd like to see now's the time.
Please, I can share her, my notes with her.
But we should have, like, a public discussion about it, too, but I can prepare...
Well, I think they were all public record, but you'd have to go back several months, but we...
You've already discussed it.
...discussed a lot of things, and I...
We've discussed an ag reserve that the applicant drafted, right, that had certain things in it. There really hasn't been a specific reaction to that. There were some items that weren't in it that I know you wanted to see, like the...
There was quite a few back and forth. We need to look at it again. There was quite a few back and forth, we need to look at it again, and I think, I mean, just, the applicant drafted one that was not, I think, tailored to our specific comments, so I would have to revisit that. They did sort of a form of it, but it wasn't specific to our, you know, but I think the issues that we raised, we can find pretty quickly.
Great.
And give them to you.
All right, so...
That would be, that would be great.
Okay.
And then the two big things that we usually think about in an ag easement is, you know, what, what is the definition of agriculture, and usually that's governed by 305A of the Ag and Markets Law, and whether or not the land would be permitted to lie fallow.
Right. Okay. If there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting.
Quick minutes? Are we approving any minutes?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And the meeting schedule as well, but did you want to adjourn this hearing to continue with the next meeting?
Let's adjourn this, a motion to adjourn this application to the...
The motion to adjourn the discussion of this particular application to the next meeting on roughly the 15th, I think it is, on September, in light of the comments and the reservations of the participating parties and the preparation of further material that's been suggested. I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Aye, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hands up.
Okay. Everybody ready to approve the minutes that are on the agenda?
Yes.
There's two minutes we have slated for approval, which is July 21st and August 4th.
Okay, a motion to approve the July 21st minutes, second.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we put on the agenda the, the schedule for the remainder of the year as the first and third...
Wait a minute, I want to prove that's, I was doing them one at a time.
Yep.
So a motion to approve, what was the second date, Alex?
August 4th.
A motion to approve the August 4th minutes, second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
And you said you abstained from that second vote?
Yes, because I wasn't present.
Gotcha, just want to make sure we record it correctly in the minutes, thanks.
Thank you.
And then Alex, you want to talk about the schedule?
Yeah, we put the prospective meeting dates through the rest of the year, following the typical pattern of the first and third Mondays, so we just wanted to put that up for your review, so we can officially schedule those and add that to the village calendar.
All right.
I have one conflict date, I don't know if others do, I have one conflict state.
Okay, so, I don't have an agenda in front of me, so we've got September 15th, September 29th?
No, there's only one date in September because of Labor Day.
September 15th, okay.
So the following meeting dates would be October 6th and 20th, November 3rd and 17th, and December 1st and 15th.
Amanda, what are your conflict, what's your conflict?
My conflict is November 3rd.
Okay.
So is there any way we can reschedule that too, like, I don't know, could it be the 20, what was the, what was the one, September 29th, just add it there instead of, since we have so much going on?
It's right after Thanksgiving.
September 29th? No, I'm saying, can we, we skipped to the 15th, and then we didn't have the 29th. Could we put it in on the 29th?
I have a conflict on October 20th, I'm out of the country for a wedding.
October 20? Wait, so I think we're October 20.
Good. When was the December meetings again?
The 15th.
First and 15th.
The...
First and 15th.
First and the 15th.
So we have some problems.
We have four people here, we have enough.
Yeah, you know, I'm inclined to stick to the announced schedule, first and third Monday, and assuming that we don't have a quorum, then we can adjourn the meeting, or if it's, but I sort of want to cross that bridge when we get to it, as we get closer these days, but for Alex's purpose, to show the community that we've got these days.
So we know October 20 is your day, Bill? Okay.
Yeah.
And then mine is the November, November, what was it?
3rd.
3rd.
But everybody's here on the 15th, correct? Because I think that's going to be a very busy one.
September 15th?
September, what did I say? Yeah, September 15th and October 6th. Everybody is good with those.
October 6th, I don't know. I am going to have surgery, and I don't know exactly what the date is going to be, so it could be right around then, I'm not sure.
With surgery, you can participate by Zoom too, right?
I'm sorry?
Having been through this with surgery, if you have surgery, you can actually participate by Zoom if you have that excuse.
There's a vote issue with Zoom though, right? Isn't there like something going on with Zoom?
We just need a quorum in the boardroom.
Which is?
Which is three.
Oh, okay, and then it's, you do still vote?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So let's, let's, let's keep the schedule that's on the agenda here for now.
Sounds like there'll be...
Yeah, and if there's any quorum issues, feel free to let us know.
Yeah, but the, at least these near-term meetings, which I think are going to be pretty important and pretty full agenda, we've got everybody here, so. Motion to adopt the meeting schedule as shown here on tonight's agenda.
Second the motion.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else, Alex?
No, I think that's all I have.
Alice? Thank you. No, good, thanks, thank you, thank you, everyone. Motion to close the meeting.
Want me to move there?
Yes.
I'll move, that's closing this meeting, it surprised me, I thought this meeting would go all night.
Second, all in favor.
I think that's all in September.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.